I'm being said, I'll open the Planning Commission meeting for the city of Santa Barbara for 16th of April 2009. My first request is everybody turn off your electronic devices. No cells, no tweeting, no texting, no nothing. If you have to tweet, you've got to go outside. So, we, and our devices are turned off too, so everything's an equal playing field back here, we hope, we try for. Public comment on any item not on the agenda. If you have a public comment, please come forward at this time, fill out a green slip later if you need to, on any subject not on the agenda. There being none, I will close public comment. And we will proceed with our roll call. Sorry for being out of order there.
All right. Commissioner White.
Here.
Commissioner Lodge.
Here.
Commissioner Jostis.
Here.
Commissioner Jacobs.
Here.
Commissioner Bartlet, absent. Commissioner Thompson.
Here.
Chair Larson.
Here. Thank you very much. And any requests for continuances, withdrawals, et cetera, et cetera?
No ma'am.
Okay. Any announcements and appeals?
Nope.
Nope, okay. And so, that being, that being the case, I think we're ready for our first item, which I have to find here in just a second, I am only one-handed. Oh, thanks Addison. The application of Pete Aylin for Mark Edwards for 124 Los Aguahes. Please come forward, a staff report first.
Suzanne Johnston will be giving the staff report.
Thank you. Ten minutes, I've got the watch.
Good afternoon, Chair Larson, Commissioners. The project before you today is at 124 Los Aguahes. You can see it here on the aerial map. The proposal is to demolish a single-family residence and detached garage and construct a three-story, three-unit condominium building. And replant the Mission Creek development limitation area with native plantings. The required applications for the project are a modification to allow the third story to encroach into the front setback along Los Aguahes, two modifications to allow the building to encroach into each interior yard, and a coastal development permit to allow construction of a new building in the appealable jurisdiction of the coastal zone, and a tentative subdivision map to divide the lot into three residential condominiums. There are two project alternatives that were mentioned in the staff report. This is a site plan for alternative one. You can see that the development limitation area is highlighted in green, the extent of it, and the basic setbacks are indicated in orange. This is the alternative one elevation that faces Los Aguahes. This is adjacent to the adjacent apartments, to the commercial building on the west, and this is the rear of the building as it faces Mission Creek. This is the site plan for alternative two. You can see there are two red squares, rectangles, in the rear, and that indicates where the posts from the, that would support the second and third floor are within the development limitation area. This is the visual sim that was provided to us for alternative two at the time that it came through Planning Commission back in November of 2006. And this is a rear elevation visual sim with a close-up here. I would like to say that alternative two does not meet the open space requirements. It is not consistent with the open space element policy, nor the creek's division policy, and there's concern about the second story above the landscaped area and what effect it might have on the landscaping within the development limitation area. The project went to ABR back in February of 2006, one time. The Historic Landmarks Commission approved a historic structures report and a archaeological report in 2005, and it had a Planning Commission concept, like I said before, November 2nd, 2006. And we received revised plans after that, which is our new alternative one. We prepared an environmental document, the draft initial study mitigated negative declaration. We held a public review period, as well as a public hearing to take comments on that document. And during that public review period, we received two letters, and the staff's responses to comments are attached in the final initial study mitigated negative declaration. At this time, we have no substantial evidence that the project as mitigated would result in a project-specific or cumulative impact, and therefore, the mitigated negative declaration was the appropriate environmental document. It did identify three areas of significance, of potential significance, archaeological resources, historic resources, and noise, but with the implementation of mitigation measures, all the potentially significant impacts are reduced to less than significant. You will see that you received a copy of revised conditions of approval. We have incorporated the mitigations that were in the mitigated, or mitigation monitoring report program at the end of the final negative deck into that document, as well as we deleted conditions C-10 and E-3, which were regarding inclusionary housing requirements. Staff recommends that the commission adopt the mitigated negative declaration and approve the project alternative one, making the findings outlined in the staff report and subject to the revised conditions of approval that you are distributed today.
Is that it?
Mm-hmm.
Good job. You made it in ten minutes, that was phenomenal. All right. We would like to hear from the applicant, please. I'm sure you have a presentation. Thank you very much. Introduce yourself, please.
Well, Chair Larson, my name is Mark Edwards, and I am the owner of 124 Los Aguahes.
Welcome.
And off the watch, I would like to express my concern about your foot.
Oh, minor detail.
Hope that it's on the heel.
Thank you very much. It is.
Thank you. I would like to begin by acknowledging the planning staff for their efforts, and at times tolerance, in working with me on this project. I also would like to acknowledge my neighbors, some of whom are here today, for their time they have afforded me to discuss and share my project, and of course, my gifted consultants, without whose tireless efforts I would have no project to present. Thank you so much. The project before you today is a culmination of years of careful study and planning, hydrology, biology, sound attenuation, neighborhood and community compatibility, board and peer review, and of course, excellence in architecture, have been utilized in an effort to craft an appropriate solution to the design challenges of 124 Los Aguahes Avenue. Every effort has been made to preserve the historical significance of the site and to move into the future in the most environmentally sensitive way possible. Our project today is a sound example of what I believe is important in development. It listens to community principles and proactively integrates them with the overall goals of the project. We believe it will be an asset to both the community and the neighborhood. Our project eliminates unsightly overhead utility services along the waterway and provides generous native landscaping and habitat for wildlife in that area. Today, we will present for your consideration options to the project that would eliminate the need for any zoning modifications. However, I need to point out, a portion of the staff report that, in all due respect, the staff, is not accurately stated. In the opening paragraph, and in the second paragraph on page four, there are made references to projections and encroachments into the area defined by the Santa Barbara Municipal Code as the area of development limitation along Mission Creek. I have carefully read and studied that section, as well as entering into discussions and receiving a determination from the city building official as directed in the municipal code. What I have learned is that this area of development limitation is confined to land, floodwaters, and structures that would be affected by floodwaters. It is not written as a limitation on the airspace above the ground and the highest flood elevation. Any reference to this area as a setback, or use of terms appropriate for setbacks, is not correct. However, in respect to the efforts of the commission and the land use policies of the city, we have chosen not to maximize build-out in this area. We have placed our first-floor structures outside of this area. Further, in an effort to preserve open space along the waterway, and due to our unique proximity to the railroad, through negotiations with their agents, we have been able to add 49 lineal foot of frontage and 578 square foot of area along that waterway. This additional area and footage will be landscaped in a native palette, which will add to and preserve open space. Our project goes beyond the required mitigations in the process of historical preservation by creating a documentary record of the existing structure that will be presented in bound copies to the Gledhill Library at the Santa Barbara Historical Museum and the Archives at UCSB. We have incorporated many critical elements of green building principles into the architecture, such as rainwater management, usable open space, light and air, renewable construction materials, and so on. The project will qualify for LEED certification. Storm systems eliminate runoff as required, and through the use of a bioswale and subterranean rock chamber, they will work to clean and restore water to the groundwater reserves. Private outside spaces below the bright line of our community's sound levels are provided, while at the same time, the mass of the structure attenuates sound for the entire neighborhood. Two moderate-sized ownership units are added to the community's housing inventory, creating no adverse impacts on our public systems. All required parking will be onsite and behind closed doors. Also, these residential units will eliminate the possibility of this land being developed into higher density use, such as hotel motel, and prevent the polarization of use and style cautioned by the coastal plan. The proposed project is an excellent piece of sensitively crafted architecture. It is a composition that is sure to become a shining example of what works well for private individuals while being acutely sensitive to neighbors and their hood. I'm now pleased to present the project architect, Mr. Peter Aylin, who will explain the architectural elements of our design solution for the project. Pete?
Thank you very much, Mr. Aylin.
Thank you, Chair Larson, Commissioners. Pleasure to be here today. We worked hard to do, try to do this in 15 minutes, so we're going to give it a shot. But if we need a couple minutes, I hope you can allow us to do that. We've been doing this for a while. The last time we were here with all the issues that we had to cover in that short amount of time, we really feel that there were two elements that we didn't get to communicate enough to you. One is, is this overhang situation in the back. The second is just how the building is masked, you know, how it works, how open it actually is, and how light it actually is. So we actually, so we built this model to give you guys an idea of how that really works. This is the best way to, to cover that. The last time we were here, the motion from the commission was that we would remove this overhang, that we would lower the height of the building, which we've done, and that we would re-study the front facade to make it more compatible with the residential neighborhood. We've done that, and we'll show that to you. And like at the ABR, the commission found that the size, bulk, and scale was acceptable with those conditions, and we're comfortable with the, with the style of the architecture. So what we have for you right now is, this is alternative two, you know, the original project, and that's alternative one that's kind of rotating on the screen. You can see in the back how we've chopped off, you know, the back of the building to comply with that 20-foot, 25-foot zone. So what we did was, after that meeting, we studied the architecture, we studied this, this project. We weren't as happy with it, but we went ahead and used it for the M&amp;D process, because it doesn't really matter if we're happy with windows and such for that process. Once we got through that process, we then really took a hard look at this, you know, to bring it up to a level that we thought was commensurate with the first design. So we're not just showing you a dog in order to get this, this one approved.
No, you're not on.
Hear me now?
Yes.
Nice, okay. So, let's see here. Remember the right button. There we go. We have four quick shots to show you. This is the original plan, you know, which shows the overhang and those two elements that come down into that 25-foot area. Then, our second shot here. Oops, that's not it. This is the revised project. And you can see that the back of the project, when it gets cut off, loses its sense of integration with the rest of the building. And we've, we've really tried to make it work, but it's, it's a very tough thing to do. But you can see the comparison between the two, and why we liked the first, the first option. Then, just very quickly, this was our original front elevation, our original front shot, which you guys wanted us to reduce, that mass there. So what we've done is we've studied this, and really lightened it up by condensing that, that two-story element there in the front, and opening up those windows a little more, really lightening the, the building. It's important to note that when you look at this building, you're really just going to see that first two-story element, that third story setback. The other thing we did was have a peer review. We talked to members of the community, you know, stakeholders in the community, people that have served on this board, ABR, HLC, you know, about our concern about this and what they thought. And overwhelmingly, 100% of support was for this, this version of the project. That helped validate, at least to us, you know, that we were going in the right direction. And they encouraged us to come back with this and really talk to you guys about those two, about that issue. So what happens with the model, what this model can demonstrate, is that, here's, here's the 25-foot line right here. So this is the mass that would be taken out. Now, where does that go? It's got to go, it's got to go here. So what happens is we lose the real strong aspect here of the, of the two separate masses. We lose the light and air that this architecture really employs. This area downstairs has a lot of light, a lot of natural ventilation, and, and that gets compromised. And so that, that's a concern to us. Let's talk about mods. We know this is a sensitive issue, especially nowadays, and the number of mods is, it can be a concern for you guys. But we asked, need to ask ourselves why we have the mods. We have the mods because the actual enclosed square footage of the ground floor is, is more, is twice, is less than twice as big, I'm doing it backwards, than the, than the square footage on the second floor. In order to comply with the setbacks, this area has to be twice as big as the area on the third floor. And interestingly enough, when we went through the process initially, staff didn't catch that. Because when you look at the, at the drawings, it looks like it's a two-story building, and it looks like the lower area is enclosed. But in fact, looking at the model, you can see how open this, this style of architecture is. So technically, we can only count the square footage in these garages as the actual square footage down there. So, how do we solve that? How do we get rid of the mods? Here's how we do it. If we fill in the sides of the building, like so, we don't have any mods. Because now we have the square footage on the ground floor that's twice the size of this up here. So that's an option that we have to eliminate the mods. If you guys feel that that's a good way to go, you're more comfortable doing that, then we're, we're certainly, you know, amenable to that. Now, things have changed since we really started, originally started this project. The setback on the third floor is now 20 feet instead of 15, so we would also have to pull this back five feet. And again, we've eliminated all the modifications on the project. To me, granting the mods gives us a better project. It gives us a project with light and air, it's a greener solution, we don't have to have mechanical ventilation for the parking structure, no carbon monoxide, or dioxide, or whatever it is, monitoring. We lose, our, this whole area down here stores water underneath and kind of ventilate perks through. We lose that aspect of the project. So, you know, technically, it doesn't work, but looking at, at the actual solution, I think you guys have something to hang your hat on, as far as those modifications go. Let's talk about the waterway, back here, Mission Creek. We know that this is a sensitive issue for you guys, and we respect...
About five more minutes.
Five?
Five.
We're going to do it. You're charged to protect and enhance the creek. And we feel frankly that we're doing a lot, and we're not that far apart in the solution. I think I'd like to offer that the, that this channelized waterway, you know, the 300 feet of this allows you to look at things differently, allows you to look at things uniquely. You know, the rest of the creek, up from the freeway and down from this channelized portion, is going to get the, the banks, it's going to get those, those things. But here, we're never going to have that. So we'd like you to at least consider that when you're thinking about what happens in this area right here. And the Army Corps and their project is doing nothing in this area. We also understand your concern about setting a precedent for the rest of the development along here, this is the first project. And so by doing something like this, are you, are you, you know, giving up some power, whatever you may have in the future, to deal with future property owners? And we understand that concern. And I would offer that, you have really two choices, you can take a hard line and say 25-foot is it, and that's that, and it makes it easy. Or you can show the property owners in this area, and us, that you're flexible, that you're willing to work with us to come up with a, a unique solution that works. And that message to the rest of the community, I think, would be a very nice, strong message. Otherwise, people won't really do anything with those properties. We won't get that native area continuous down the creek, and we won't get protection from all the parking lots in the backyard of the apartments that are draining into the creek. And people that have existing structures and have setback are going to really be thinking if they want to give that up. Mark mentioned the discussion about the 25-foot setback, that we're not encroaching at all with this into anything. If this were in fact a setback, and we were encroaching, we would need a mod, right? And so there's no mod required for this back here, so we're not encroaching into anything. And that's, you know, for us, is a very important issue. You know, a setback, as Mark said, goes all the way to the sky, area development limitation is on the ground. Last thing is that this is, as Mark said, he's got this railroad land under contract. And this is probably the only chance, not in a threatening manner here, but the only chance that we're going to have to do this, is this project. This is railroad property here, they're not going to do it. And this property owner here really doesn't have, have the opportunity. So I'd like to throw that in the mix. With that said, we are obviously willing to work with you guys to come up with a, a project that you guys are comfortable with, and sure, while listening to your concerns, we've given you some options that hopefully, you know, that we've looked at to address those concerns. And we hope we can work with you to develop an approvable project, and, but you know our, our preference.
Thank you, Mr. Aylin.
So Mark's going to finish up, just a couple minutes.
Three sentences. Thank you for your time. I would like to say in closing, I'd like to thank the commission for its consideration of our work. I've been a community member and builder in Santa Barbara for more than 35 years. I'm not a developer. As you know, this is a complicated process. In our case, it has been five years in the making. I believe in the path. We are acutely aware of the challenges and would not have proceeded unless we were confident that this is the best solution for this project site. Today, we ask for your approval of our project, and we thank you for your efforts. We're here to take your questions.
Thank you very much. With that, I'll open the public hearing. Two minutes each, please, on the public hearing. If you, if, if someone has a stated position and agrees with another person, just say, "I agree with the previous position," and, and you'll have our eternal gratitude. So with that, Maureen Masson, please come forward. Thank you very much for coming out today. Introduce yourself to the microphone.
My name is Maureen Masson, and I'm representing the Pearl Chase Society, and our, our society is over 470 members strong, and Sue Adams could not be here, so she asked me to read this. The Pearl Chase Society was at the forefront of the waterfront architectural survey of 1998, when the waterfront, particularly West Beach, was a special concern to our community. It should be noted that this portion of Santa Barbara is being considered as the West Beach Historic District. The city's urban historian, Jake Jacobus, has agreed to pursue this designation. The Xixing Cottage at 124 Los Aguahes Avenue is not a historic site, but the area surrounding it is of significant historic character and merit. Any new structure should be in harmony with the neighboring architectural styles, particularly as they apply to the bulk and scale of this area. Was the Historic Landmark Commission recommendation of a Spanish colonial revival style for this project acknowledged? The proposed West Beach Historic District and the HLC's jurisdiction over it should be considered, particularly as it is among the goals of this district and the HLC, to upgrade the public views from the highway and the train station. The draft negative declaration neglected to assess the impact of an almost 32-foot-high, three-story building on the immediate area, immediate one and two-story neighboring residences. This massive structure in an architectural style dramatically foreign to this area will create an historic impact. The proposed structure does not allow sequel guidelines of compatibility for structures adjacent to historic landmarks. The three ABR hearings that conceptually approved this project started back in 2004 and ended three years ago. This was prior to the public uproar over an inappropriate development in Santa Barbara, especially on Chapala Street. A new conceptual ABR hearing and a new Planning Commission hearing would be helpful to ascertain these review bodies' current opinions on the design height, bulk, and proposed structure. The applicant is requesting a reduction of five feet on the front setback and four feet on each of the side interior setbacks. Such modifications are substantial and will negatively impact the neighborhood. It is obvious that this condo is not designed for workforce housing. The two-bedroom unit is 15, 25 square feet, and one-bedroom units are in, in excess of 1,000. The ground floor contains parking for five cars. Without conforming to mandatory setbacks, the condo will impact the ambience of the street situated in the tenderloin of the waterfront district, almost done. In order to enhance the Mission Creek riparian corridor, the mitigation requirements of only native plant material should increase the entire rear yard. The oak tree should be preserved. The non-native palms could be replaced with sycamores, providing better screening. The Board of Directors of the Pearl Chase Society asks the Planning Commission in February of 2008 to require the applicant to adhere to the mandated setback rules and to require that its architectural style be more harmonious with the neighborhood. Consideration should be given to the impact of the proposed structure as it is within the view shed of the landmarked Historic Railroad Station. As the applicant has made no changes to the product since the first writing in February 2008, we ask you to deny it as it is currently proposed. Sincerely, the Pearl Chase Society.
Thank you. And you, I gave Ms., Ms. Masson a little extra time because of Pearl Chase Society, speaking for a group. Kellum DeForest, please, followed by Robert Maxim. Remember, if you agree with the person before you, you can just say you agree.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair and fellow Commissioners. I'm here to speak about the impact of this bulky, international-style, international-style being quite foreign to Santa Barbara, not appropriate, Pearl Chase didn't like it, this international-style building in this historic waterfront district. As has been pointed out, this district consisting mostly of two- and three-story structures in Spanish revival style, the, and you will note that the conversion of the Seven Up Building down, near the beach, is, the conversion of that building into condos has, is being done in the appropriate Spanish revival style, with the only three, with the high elements stuck way to the rear of the property. As pointed out, the Historic Landmarks Commission asked in its... As pointed out, the Historic Landmarks Commission asked in its, in accepting the Historical Structures Report, that any building be done in Spanish revival style. Please ask yourself, does this inappropriate building provide any pluses to the city of Santa Barbara? I don't think two extra housing units would help much, especially as Mr. Maxim can attest that most or many of the housing in the West Beach area is transient, they're rented out to people in the LA area that come up for weekends. So I don't think this solves anything. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Robert Maxim, followed by Merced Viegas. I'm sorry.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. My name is Robert Maxim, and I'm here on behalf of my wife, Patricia, as well. We live only a few hundred feet away from this proposed project. It is our sincerest belief that if this project is approved, even as presented recently, that it will be truly an anomaly to this neighborhood. Anomaly being, it is an extreme variance in what might be considered the norm or its surroundings. You have with you this note that I submitted earlier today, but I would just quickly like to do some excerpting, if nothing else, and for the public record. The Historic Structures Report, which was done by Farina Murray, states, "If the existing house is fully demolished, the architecture of the new construction should be compatible and harmonious with the buildings of the West Beach neighborhood in both massing and architectural style." In the staff report, which was done in October of '06, Compliance with the Local Coastal Plan, LCP, states that new development in and/or adjacent to existing residential neighborhoods must be compatible in terms of scale, size, and design, with the prevailing character of established neighborhoods. In addition to that, it specifically states that the West Beach is recognized as a unique residential neighborhood and should be treated in a manner that strives to maintain this unique character. The LCP recognizes the predominant style in Component III as Spanish-flavor architecture typical of Santa Barbara. In addition to that, your own staff states, "Staff believes that the proposed project's size, bulk, and scale and modern architectural style are not compatible with the prevailing character of the neighborhood, and that the structure would set a," and I want to emphasize this, "set a negative precedent for allowing non-compatible residential development in this unique and historically valuable setting." Finally, I'd just like to comment that what I've just read are not my opinion or my wife's opinion. This is the opinions of professionals, so to speak, in the business, and their recommendations to you. How can all of them be wrong and the developer of number 124 be correct in his oversized building that requires modifications on three sides and its second and third floor infringements on the Mission Creek limitations? Its architectural style is totally alien to the neighborhood. It is the tallest residential building on the block, three stories, all of the others are one and two. Wherein is this building compatible as required by the LCP?
15 seconds, please.
The project, if approved, will set a precedent regarding the size, bulk, modifications, and height, as well as the style, which is radically juxtaposed to more traditional styles in this neighborhood. Undoubtedly, this building would be an anomaly. We urge you to deny construction of this project. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Merced Viegas, followed by Mr. Rich Unterman. Welcome, please state your name for the record.
Good afternoon, Merced Viegas. Thank you for this opportunity. I live directly across the street from the structure here.
Do you want to pull the microphone down just a little bit so we can hear you real clearly? Thanks.
And I guess when I'll be getting up in the morning and open my blinds, I'll be seeing the back end of this thing. Another thing, I do want to mention that I agree with Mr. Maxim's comments. And one other thing, it seems like the parking on this street isn't being addressed. I know the parties that'll be buying these condos will be visited with guests and family, and they're gonna park on this street. And that's always been a problem on this street here. It all started with the brewing at a beer place around the corner, Friday and Saturdays. If I'm out late, I can't come home and find any parking. So anyway, that's just something else to think about. That's it, thank you.
Thank you very much, sir. Rich Unterman, followed by Marlene Bofong.
Yes, hello, my name's Rich Unterman, and I'm here to urge that you support this project. I think it's really quite unique and well-done. To back up, when my wife and I moved here in 1995, we fell in love with West Beach. It reminded us of the Marina District in San Francisco where I grew up. And we bought soon after that a 17-bedroom building, two doors, three doors down from this one, 104 Los Aguales, which we've maintained and whatnot until we just recently sold it. We had hoped to demo it and build a residential project like this, but we soon came to realize that rental units were precious in Santa Barbara, and that that would be irresponsible. So we didn't. I was excited when this project came along, because it seems like that community needs ownership to strengthen it. It's a fabulous place to live, close to the water, close to downtown, it serves lots of the issues that Santa Barbara favors. I think the architecture is extremely clever. This is not the heart of the West Beach area, it's the edge of it. It's the edge of it that has mostly property line-to-property line warehouses, 100% lot coverage to many extents. And I think that they've been clever in accepting that as a necessity in this area. You want to get people into the proximity to downtown and the beach, and building a building that might seem bulky, but is in fact typical of the neighborhood. And then carving into it and letting light go through it and creating this really fanciful residential character out of a kind of industrial landscape. As you go down that block, Danica House and the Berry Factory and all the others, this seems very appropriate on this street. I wouldn't encourage it two blocks over, but it seems really clever and appropriate here. So two other things. In this day and age, it seems like you need to have mods in your toolbox. You're working with a 50- to 80-year-old zoning ordinance, and there's gonna be rational decisions necessary, and the mod allows you to do that. So I'd encourage that. Secondly, the creek setback, you and I have been dealing with creek setbacks in the past. We had the first one in Santa Barbara in excess of 25 feet 10 years ago. This is not in any way like that, and I'd encourage you to try to create some flexibility here. Thanks for letting me talk.
Thank you, Mr. Unterman. Marlene, next, please.
Marlene who?
I think it's Bofong, but we'll find out in a second.
Bofoney.
Bofoney. Oh, it's close. Could you please pull the microphone down and introduce yourself with your own name?
I'm Marlene Bofoney. I am the sister of the owner of the property across the street. I was raised in that area, and I'm not real young, so I've seen a lot of things. The house that's existing is very small, a two-bedroom, one- or two-bath home, and this is much too large. I agree with Mr. Maxim and Mr. Viegas. Thank you.
Thank you very much. You're welcome. And anybody else to speak to this item? Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing. And I think at this point, we'll open for questions from the Commission. Oh, and we have no lights, so please do say "Madam Chair" or something when, oh, I like that. Oh yeah, there are lights. Good. Mr. Thompson.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Let me comment to try to keep track of what we're talking about here. It's a little confusing that the first alternative submitted is now Alternative II, and the second alternative submitted is now Alternative I, and the applicant has proposed, I guess that's a 2A by enclosing the first floor. So bear with us while we talk about these various different alternative numbers. But I would like to get a clarification on the proposed findings and conditions of approval in here. Are they in relationship to Alternative I? Is that how staff wrote this up, assuming that Alternative II would not be considered by the Commission?
That is correct.
And which alternative is the applicant requesting approval on? Could I ask the applicant to come up and tell us?
Please, please come up and speak to the record. Thank you.
Our preference is Alternative II, which was the original proposal, which is what this is here. That's our preference.
Okay, so staff's preference is Alternative I, and applicant's, okay, thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Lodge was next, I believe.
Or Ms. Jacobs. Okay. I'd like to ask staff, Mr. Edwards spoke to different kinds of setbacks, the ones with the creek setbacks, and as if there was been, and the regular building setbacks. Could you go over that and explain what which is which and the differences?
Okay, I don't have a slide regarding the development limitation area, but that is generally a 25-foot area from the top of bank of Mission Creek. And it is, the purpose is for flood purposes, to not create new structures within that that would create a flood issue and cause damage to adjacent property owners or the lot itself. As for front setbacks, you can see here, I actually took an excerpt out of the ordinance, and if you have a three-story structure under the current rules that were adopted last year, the whole building at the front should be setback 15 feet. If the top floor was less than 50%, you can see ground floor and second stories would be setback 10 feet, and the third story 20 feet. On the interior, three-story buildings would be setback 10 feet from the property line. If the top floor, again, was less than 50%, then the ground floor in the second story could be 6 feet, and the third story 10 feet. And then there is the rear setbacks. The development limitation area in the rear setbacks has been confused on this project from the beginning. Rear setbacks in the R3/R4 zone are 6 feet for the ground floor and 10 feet for the second and third floor. However, the development limitation area, which has been confused as a setback, is 25 for flood purposes. Does that clarify?
Yes, thank you. And just a question, in the general plan update, is the city looking at greater distances for setbacks between the top of the bank and development, or are we sticking with the 25 feet?
The Creek's Division has some policies set up. I don't know if in general plan update they have addressed this, but generally, they want a minimum of 25 feet, and they have asked for as much as 50 feet from the top of Mission Creek.
Thank you.
Ms. Jacobs.
Thank you, Chair Larson. My question has to do with the underlying units per acre. This is zoned 12 units per acre. The proposed project is 22 units per acre, and I know that there is variable calculation involved in that, but my question is, is that use of the 22-unit-per-acre variability a discretionary decision, or is there an entitlement to the developer to make use of a higher units-per-acre count?
Madam Chair, Commissioner Jacobs, that is an entitlement. The variable density, if you meet the requirements of variable density, then you get that.
Get 22.
Correct. And the way variable density works, for people who don't know, if you have a studio, you get more units per bedroom, in fact, if you, sorry, more units per acre. If you have studios, you get 27 units per acre. If you get one bedrooms, you get something like 25. If you have one, two bedrooms, you get about 22, and then 18 if you have three bedroom plus.
Madam Chair, excuse me.
Followed by Mr. Justice.
Would it be that the requirement would be the 12 dwelling units per acre? That is the underlying...
That is the underlying general plan map for residential density. However, the housing element, when the variable density was brought into the ordinance, discussed that variable density was allowed and gave some leniency, I guess you can call it, to let the Planning Commission approve projects consistent with the general plan for those variable density projects. Otherwise, apartments could go in and couldn't be converted to condominiums later. So we have approved other projects that have a higher density than 12 units per acre. I know on Olive Street, I had one that was 22 units per acre, so it would not be inconsistent with the general plan.
Thank you.
Mr. Justice.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just to help clarify a point, and this is a question for staff, the applicant, Mr. Aylund, indicated by adding some things to his model, a way of avoiding the side yard modifications. And my question is, does putting forth a project that is consistent with all of the setbacks result in greater square footage than what is proposed with the modifications, about the same or less? Because what the applicant indicated was that if they did a non-mod project, they would enclose certain areas of the first floor, thereby increasing the square footage of the first floor in order to get the appropriate ratios to maintain the third-floor piece without a mod. And I'm just, I just wanted to clarify that the way this is worked and interpreted, they would get, this is a less, a less dense square footage-wise than without the mods.
Madam Chair, Commissioner Joseph, I just pulled the plans out because this is the first I've heard of this, and I'm not sure that I agree with Mr. Aylund about whether that would actually work, just looking at some, I mean, I've looked at it for like three minutes. But let's say that he was right, and you could, if you enclosed the ground floor, and by doing that, you made the square footage more than twice the size of the third floor, then the answer to your question would be, yeah, the building would be bigger. I mean, it would be bigger because there'd be more enclosed square footage. And then if that was also the case, they wouldn't need modifications. But based on what I've just seen on the plans in three minutes, it doesn't look like the third floor, even if you enclosed the ground floor, would be less than half of the ground floor's square footage, so I'm not sure that it works.
Okay. I'll be looking for clarification.
Can you just hold off till we finish questions, and then Mr. White?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Two questions. One is to Mr. Vincent, to follow up on the question about the setbacks from Mission Creek. Is it your understanding that the way the city ordinance is written, that the area needs to be clear to be the setback, or that it can have overhangs, or et cetera? I'm hearing from the applicant that there's, since the intent is flood protection, and we don't have a flood issue here, that it changes the dynamic. And I just would appreciate your understanding of that.
Madam Chair, to answer Commissioner White's question, the development limitation that is at question regarding Mission Creek is not a setback. Setbacks are unobstructed from the ground to the sky. Development limitation has restrictions regarding structures that could potentially create flooding problems. In fact, the, this particular development limitation even provides a process where the building official can approve structures within the 25 feet. And in this case, in fact, the proposed poles have actually been approved by the building official as not presenting a flood control issue. So we need to distinguish ourselves from development limitation and setback. Doesn't mean that there may not be issues regarding general plan policies regarding the placement of structures near the creek, but as far as a zoning requirement, those poles could be there, and the cantilevered... those poles could be there and the cantilevered decks, although it's not quite cantilevered if there's a pole, I'm not an architect, that they can be there without infringing on the zoning ordinance. And that's why staff pointed out the fact that there's not a modification for those. They're not infringing on it, on a setback. The development limitation is out there, the building official has looked at it, there isn't a conflict with the, with the development limitation. There may be issues that the planning commission wants to consider regarding the conservation element and, and the view within the conservation element that creeks, including Mission Creek, are an area of open space that needs to be preserved and protected, but there is not a zoning inconsistency with, I guess this is, uh, Alternative 2.
So, to, to follow on that, then, the conservation element, I mean, first of all, okay, the, the, the building meets the standard of care on the flood issue and the structure obstructing flooding, et cetera. Does it, from staff's perspective, does it meet the standard of care on the conservation element of the coastal plan?
On Alternative 1, yes. Alternative 2, no.
Um, thank you. And then, secondly, what I'm trying to figure out, uh, was a very, it was a very interesting, we've seen this only, a very rare, on very rare occasions where, where the, Jeff Shelton did it once with bringing in pieces of cardboard and, and being able to mix and match a structure before our very eyes. It's really an ingenious way to guide us through the options. I'm curious what ABR was looking at.
Alternative 2.
And there's 2B, there's 2A.
The current variation of the model is done after.
This before us is what ABR commented on. Great. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. White. Ms. Jacobs?
Thank you, Chair Larson. I wanted to also make a comment or ask a question about the, the transforming the square footage to, to try to get that, to keep the third story the same, change the first story and make it more enclosed square footage. But it still would have to go back through design review, so it wouldn't necessarily be exactly what we, um, we might imagine to be the case looking at the model. Right. Thanks.
Mr. Thompson, please.
Thank you. To follow up on this question about the 25-foot flood zone in the back along Mission Creek, it seems like the wall, the, the lines Mission Creek on 124 is higher than the wall across Mission Creek on the other side. So, does that come into the equation as to how you deal with flood issues? Has anybody looked at what FEMA map says as far as 100-year flood in the area? Does it matter that the wall is higher on the property in question and therefore any creek flooding would flow out to the railroad station first?
I believe that the wall is higher on that because of the way the water comes down and it was undercutting the, the side of the embankment during major storm events and that's where the sandstone was put in. The flood control, Santa Barbara County Flood Control did issue a letter regarding this project, so they have looked at this and it does flood first out towards the railroad tracks.
So, you're saying the county flood control wasn't concerned with a flood here?
We have a letter from them saying that they've reviewed the project in that creek, segment of the creek.
Mr. Cottrell?
Madam Chair, I, I also, I just want to make sure that, that the commission understands staff's position. We don't have a flood issue with it either. Not, no one on staff does. The building officials already said that, that they would issue the, um, the exception to that development restriction. We're, we're looking at it more on a policy standpoint, open space and conservation element policies as opposed to this zoning ordinance requirement, which they meet.
Thank you. Any other questions? Mr. Allen, would you like one minute?
Just really quickly, yeah, with regards to the third floor or square footage and the ground floor square footage, we wouldn't have proposed that unless we checked it out. And we put it on the computer, we put the walls in, we took that square footage, it's over 3,000 feet downstairs. And upstairs is under 1,500, so we would be fine. Another thing to point out about, you know, it, it's interesting that the square footage gets bigger, but the massing of the building is going to stay the same. The building's not going to get any bigger. The square footage is going to get bigger. So, it's just one of these things where it doesn't matter. You know, what matters is, is the design. And I think Mr. Edwards has a couple of things, that's okay.
Thanks. Uh, and so now we are to comments by the commission.
Mr. Edwards, one.
Oh, excuse, oh, where did you come from? No, it was a miracle. Mr. Edwards.
I just knuckled up. I'm easy to miss.
I'm sorry. I looked down and there you were.
Few things I'd like to address in a, in a very businesslike way as far as that flood control issue. In fact, that is one of the exceptions. If, if the creek is higher on one side than the other, that is a reason for the building official to grant an exception to the otherwise 25-foot limitation area. So, the, the channel itself also is an exception. It's a flood control device that was actually built by the city of Santa Barbara in 1900 to allow the building of the Potter Hotel. So, that's another one of the exceptions. In fact, there's five exceptions and this project qualifies for all five. It's very unique in that standpoint. I'd also like to say with regards to the policy of open space, we've never been told what that really is from the staff's position. I've read the book on land use very, very carefully and I'm very much of a tactician when it comes to reading it and I understand pretty much what the intent says. And it's a very general statement that says, "We are to strive along the waterways to create more open space, space and greenery." It doesn't say how much, it just says that it's to be an effort and a good effort. And I'd like to say that that's exactly what I've taken to heart with this project and the fact that I've gone to the railroad and I've gotten extra land that was nowhere available anywhere in this situation. And given 25 feet when I didn't have to and put a lot of landscaping. So, I feel like, as much as I understand, as I've been told, which is nothing, that this project is an attempt, at least a good attempt, to comply with open space and that elbow around the waterways. Thank you.
Thank you very much. All right. Is the planning commission ready for comments?
Madam Chair, I, another question has been raised for me.
That's all right. That's fine. Ms. Lodge?
From what Mr. Edwards just said, now, because of the, the ratio between the ground floor square footage, there is a 10-foot setback on the interior side yards comes into play. For the third story only or for the first and second floor as well?
For all three four floors.
All three floors. Okay. And so, what Mr. Edwards and Mr. Allen are saying is that if they were to enclose the ground floor, and I don't know if that is a practical matter, they can actually do that, still have to have access to their, to their parking. Then, is it six feet?
If they were able to make the third floor 50%, less than 50%, the first two floors would be setback six feet from the interior and the top floor would be 10 feet.
Okay. And, and they are within, there is the six feet now?
I believe so.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Is anyone ready to lead us off with comments? Mr. White?
Well, I'll, I'll start anyway, Madam Chair. And I'm very interested in hearing what my colleagues have to say, so I'll, I won't be, uh, I still feel fluid on this project. The, the things that I am comfortable with are the, the design, I'm, the, the design style, while obviously very different than the rest of the neighborhood, I'm willing to support that, that the design style is a, as a, um, as I think Mr. Edwards commented, the, it, it is a transition zone in some ways between the industrial and the old Santa Barbara community of West Beach. I feel very strongly about, as, as Mr. Allen will recall, my, my whole sense about Mission Creek is definitely one where I, I feel like, if I had my preferences, I would be looking for even more setback than, than 25. And 25 is where I've, I've supported a couple of projects along the way. I'm thinking of the Roma Santa project as one that I, um, that I did support, that went to 25 feet. So, that, that setback, I, I just need to go with, particularly if staff is, is pointing out the, the conservation element as, as a, as a place, a policy position, I would need to stay there. I'm, um, I came prepared today not to support the side yard mods, but you've, you've offered a, and as, um, Strohman said, a clever and intriguing argument that I think has, has some heft to it about why this could be looked at, the mods on the sides could be looked at. So, um, as I said, the Mission, the Mission Creek side, I'm not flexible, feel, don't feel flexible on, but I am supportive of the style. I look forward to hearing what my colleagues have to say.
Thank you very much. Ms. Jacobs?
Thank you, Chair Larson. Like Commissioner White, this project is, is not an easy one to decide one way or the other. And part of it is because there are so many layers of land use designations in this particular spot. It has potential for historic neighborhood status, not on this exact site, but as it faces the neighborhood across the street from it, so just 20 feet away. Aside from the historic nature of the area, it also has multiple uses from hotel, residential, commercial, rental, um, and hotels. And so, there's, there's just many, many different layers of what's going on in this neighborhood. And so, for me, I am looking for, um, for neighbor, for a kind of neighborhood compatibility that really feels like it's doing the job when you're standing right in front of the building or right in that neighborhood. And the, um, the chart that accompanied our staff report, which I think Mr. Justice asked for at our last review of this project, shows the pattern of development in the area. And here's just a synopsis of it. There are 12 single-family residence or duplex projects, there are four apartment buildings, and there are five commercial buildings. So, it's overwhelmingly single-family residences. Your proposed building would be the only three-story building and the tallest building by several feet in this neighborhood. So, it stands out in more than one way, in terms of its density, in terms of its height, in terms of the number of stories. And certainly in terms of its architecture. The architectural style is a, is a tough question. I've, I've been in ABR meetings and other kinds of discussions with architects and every so often, one of them will say, "Well, aren't you really sick of Spanish colonial style? Wouldn't you like to see something different?" And people may nod their heads and say, "I would. I would love to see a really fantastic contemporary building. Santa Barbara needs more variety in its architecture." And this is a beautiful building. I don't dispute that at all. But the urban design guidelines specify Spanish colonial and I know the ABR has found a way to approve this style, but in terms of neighborhood compatibility, I don't think I can make that finding. And in terms of the urban design guidelines, I don't think it's consistent with that city's Lastly, in the requests for, um, for modifications, it's, it always comes down to the modification is necessary to provide an appropriate improvement on this property. And one of the letters from the public said it pretty well. They said, "It's not that the lot is too small for this building, it's that the building is too big for this lot. It's only 6,000 square feet. It's, it's a small lot. The proposed square footage you have is over 5,000 square feet and that's not counting all of the semi indoor/outdoor spaces and cantilevered decks, which don't count in the net square footage at all." So, I, I, I look at the site plan, I look at the floor plan, I, I don't see community benefit of affordable by design or by pricing. I see large deluxe condominiums in a fairly modest neighborhood that's primarily single-family dwellings. And I am, um, at this point, not able to make the findings to support it for a number of reasons. And I will look forward to hearing the discussion of my fellow commissioners. Thanks.
Thank you very much. Ms. Lodge?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I wanted to say that I agree with just about everything as Jacob said. In addition, it's just too big a building for the lot. I, I cannot make the findings that it is compatible with the architecture. Might be fine somewhere else. And I understand that you've brought it down in size and worked hard on it, but, um, I think you could have come in with a project that didn't require any mods. But you've chosen to go this route and I can't support it. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Mr. Thompson?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Well, I guess I'm of the opinion it's different than Ms. Jacobs and Ms. Lodge. I think it's a, a good project for the area. I won't get into the architecture. I think that's the purview of the ABR. And so, my opinion is, is that it, the architecture is not bad for the area, but I'm not going to make the decision based upon the architecture of the project. I think that's why we have an ABR. I don't think the unit sizes are exceptionally large. We are talking about 700 to 1,000 square feet per bedroom approximately. So, that's not a overly large bedroom size per unit. The issue about the 25-foot backyard, the conservation element notwithstanding, this isn't the traditional creek bank top. This is a, basically a channelized drainage. And there's not much open space conservation along a creek bank top anywhere where it's cement concrete drainage ditch. So, I think that the applicant has proposed a reasonable solution with landscaping in the area and the increased portion that he's gotten from the railroad to, to landscape, which goes a long way towards satisfying the conservation element requirement. And I believe, if my memory, which is always a problem these days, is not incorrect, that I didn't have a problem with the cantilevered deck in the first place when we first saw this. So, I will vote to support the project. And in fact, like I said, I don't have a problem with the cantilevered deck. I think that the architecture is much better with that deck on there than it is without it. But I wouldn't hold up the approval of the project for that if the rest of my commissioners, fellow commissioners aren't in favor of it.
Thank you. Mr. White?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I forgot to address one concern, which was the front yard mod. Has that gone away? Has the front, the front yard modification has been eliminated? Is that, I'm seeing Mr. Edwards nod. Steph?
As I mentioned, the rules have changed since we started the project. The third floor has gone from 15 to 20 feet. So, right now, we're at 15. So, in order to eliminate any mods, we'd have to pull the front of the building back five feet.
Okay. So, there is a 5-foot mod requested on the front of the building?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Justice?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I, I think we're fortunate to have, and I, I said this at the last hearing, I think we have an applicant who knows more about this project than the rest of us standing up here, just in terms of your, your self-admission of being a tactician. Just listening to how, how much you understand about the way this works is, is, is very respectable. In, in this particular case, I, I am really on the fence on this. I think the design is probably going to be okay with the surrounding buildings because I don't see those, um, those apartments really going anywhere unless they burn down and are rebuilt in some other format, fashion. But they're probably going to stay around for a while in spite of their, their current appearance. But they're probably going to stay around for a while in spite of their current appearance. The size, as far as the alternatives, like Mr. White, I prefer the project that stays completely 25 feet away. I understand the reasoning behind adding something in and all the technicalities of doing so. But I still get stuck on the size and the bulk of the project being absolutely maxed out. And I would prefer to see something smaller on this site. I can't see my way to the finding of this being necessary for the appropriate development of the site. I think that something slightly smaller would certainly do well and, I think, be more compatible with the properties across the street. I think the issue is not on the northeast side of the block, but on the southwest side of the block. And I think this replaces the visual relief that the rundown historic structure provides with something that's just a little bit too edgy. It's a subjective call on my part. I could go either way, but I feel it doesn't feel like it quite fits in yet.
Thank you very much. Well, has everyone commented now? I believe so. Mr. White?
Madam Chair, if I just, I'll finish off since you end customarily. And I would say that for me, the front and rear mods are the ones that I'm having trouble with. And I'm hearing my colleagues getting into the bulk question, and I appreciate that duality that we end up here. We've got our design review board that makes recommendations to us, and I make a point of honoring those. And yet, I share the concerns that I've heard from several of my colleagues about the bulk. I look to policy to say, "Okay, what do I hang my decision on?" And it's the front and rear mods that I would be expecting to go away as the next step in this process for me. I'm still, as I say, the side yards I'm intrigued with. Ms. Jacobs raised the point of would that infilled building get through the design review process? Would be that, I think that was where you were headed with that comment, and that is a bona fide question. But I'm still on the fence on those side yard mods. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Well, I'm very much a fan of the 25-foot setback. I'd love to just say that there's exceptions all along the way, but, you know, just on the off-chance that that might end up being not channelized someday, wouldn't that be a great urban creek? Look at Pete's going, no way. But I'm just saying, it's done in other places. It's been done in other places. I've seen it in many places where it's come back and been beautiful. So never say never. My concern is the size of the project as it sits on the land. As Ms. Jacobs said, 5,000 square feet on a 6,000-square-foot lot, it's popping out all over the place to make room for itself. And my concern was the west, when I went on the field trip, actually. And on the west side, you have the pop-outs for the, I think it's the west side, oh, it's the east side, I'm sorry, for the bathrooms, I believe, for the baths. And they all pop out very much towards the neighbor, who also has facing bathrooms. And I thought, I wonder what the real measurement would be bath to bath? That's very close. So to me, it was bulging in places to make it fit where really it could pull back a little. So I think it's oversized for the lot. Although I will say this about the international style of architecture. I think that in Santa Barbara, this is a classic style, but in other places. And international style architecture isn't a bad thing. It just has to be in the right place, has to be in compatible areas, and used very judiciously, it can be terrific. But I think in this neighborhood, it's really pressing the envelope. So I'm very sorry. I really would love to support it, but I can't right here. So those are my comments. Anybody care to call the question? Or make motions? Excuse me.
Madam Chair. Madam Chair, before there's a motion, I would like to say that I did a quick calculation of the ground floor square footage. If you were to just take the whole thing as a block, just fill in around the outsides, and it is on the order of about 31 or 3200 square feet. And the top floor seems to be somewhere between 13 and 15. I can't quite tell. Is that about right?
150.
Yeah. So it would be less than 50%, which means the special setbacks for the sides and the front would apply in that case.
Thank you. So a motion? Mr. Thompson?
I'll move to approve the project, making the findings in the staff report.
All right. Motion failed for lack of a second. Motion, please. Mr. Justice?
Madam Chair, I'm not quite ready to make a motion. Actually, I will make a motion, and that would be to continue the project with the intention of requesting the applicant to come back with a non-mod project. And I make that motion because I could support voting in favor of a project that comes back through the design review process and does not have the mods. And I think this is one case, because the lot is so small, that we're just doing a little bit too much on the modifications, even though it gives us an innovative approach. I'm just, that's where I can go to support the project. So that's my motion.
Second, please.
Second, back.
Mr. White?
I think we should ask Madam Chair if the applicant is agreeable to that.
Oh, okay.
I'm of the view that continuances really should have a...
I agree. So do you need a few minutes to speak amongst yourselves? Or?
Under discussion.
Ms. Jacobs?
Thank you. Would the motion maker be including in that continuance that the project, without modifications, redrawn, go back through ABR before it returned to the commission?
Go ahead.
We want to make you happy. So, you know, we would be happy to go back and do a non-mod project. That's a fairly straightforward thing for us to do. We'll stay out of the 25 feet. We have those two things. But I really would like to get some clarification on the style of the architecture. We've heard different things, and we have been to ABR. And that's not an easy place to get, you know, an approval. And they, you know, thought that this was the right way to go, and the same with the commission last time. So that's critical for us.
You bet.
Thank you. Mr. Thompson?
I would just point out that the non-mod project, as was demonstrated earlier, actually, at least in my opinion, is not a better project for the site. By enclosing the first floor, you lose a lot of openness and make the appearance of the structure a lot more bulky than it is as proposed here with the open first floor. So we're dealing with a technicality as to what's causing the modification, whether we count the square footage of the total first floor or not count it, has to do with whether there's a wall continuous around it. So I just would point that out, that it doesn't necessarily make a better project, even though it does away with the mod.
Thank you. Mr. Justice?
Just to follow on that Mr. Thompson's comment, I understand and appreciate that. I'm expecting that the applicant is not only a tactician, but a strategist as well, and will hear what our comments were today, and will come back with a project that is a good project. Because I've seen that intent demonstrated through his experience in this process. So I'm confident that's definitely in the cards. And I would, if protocol allows me, ask a straw poll prior to the motion on the floor regarding the architectural style.
Let's do this first. Let me take the few comments that are here, and then we'll be back for your straw vote, which you may pose the question for. All right. Mr. White? I'm just going to go down the line if you don't mind.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Well, first of all, as, first of all, I was clear on my acceptance of the modern architecture international as being acceptable to me. The, I thought Mr. Thompson's comments were exactly where I was struggling, is that I couldn't find a way on the front and rear. I appreciated the overall comments about bulk, general bulk being just a little too much. And as Mr. Justice said, what this commission is looking for is a good project. And I still have a question going on in my mind about this removal, the little panels that came in and out. I'm still, what I'd like to have is ABR to have the freedom or somehow to be able to say, "This is a scaled-down project. If there is a mod that actually is not increasing the bulk of the building, then perhaps that mod is acceptable." So that's why my comments went to the front and rear and left the side at least in question.
I would suggest that the next time this comes to us, if we continue it today, that it come with a member of the ABR. Thank you. And next, Ms. Jacobs?
Thank you, Chair Larson. A couple of comments on both the style and what I think is a more important issue, which is the perceived bulk of the building. Counting square footage in a building like this, where there are so many cantilevered, outdoor, semi-enclosed spaces, is difficult. Things that may not count in terms of official square footage or net square footage in particular still show up to the eye as bulk. And a roofed-over space, spaces that contribute to a perceived size of the building. And it is a subjective thing, but it does play into issues of neighborhood compatibility. And so when I'm looking at the findings and thinking, before you remove the modifications, what modifications would be supportable? And I anticipate the upper floors shrinking, not the lower floor growing. And I think most of us probably were along those lines, and you were very astute in providing us an actual puzzle to see how that could work in a different way. But for me, that doesn't make it an easier project to support. Enclosing the bottom does a technical trick, but it doesn't take away the issues of the perceived size, bulk, and scale of the building. And it doesn't take away the very real data in the neighborhood that what you're proposing... First of all, the new proposal is bigger than the original one. You know, Unit 2 got bigger, not smaller, when it came back to us. And one commissioner said they didn't think these were luxury units, but I think a 14,000-square-foot one-bedroom unit, 1,400, sorry.
14,000, wow.
I must be thinking about houses on the Gaviota Coast. The 1,400-square-foot one-bedroom, that's a big unit, you know? That's a big one-bedroom unit. 1,500-square-foot two-bedroom unit, I think these are big units. I don't think these are small. They're replacing an 800-something-square-foot house. I think these units are big. I think the square footage is big. I think the unit size is big. I think it's all just too big for the neighborhood. And it comes in, just from cold data, taller. It's three stories. It's the only one in the whole neighborhood. Well, at least according to our staff report, and, you know, you can look at the staff report and see. But it's big. It's tall. And that's not just perception, that's actual descriptive measurements. So if the project comes back to us without mods, I would also be expecting it to get my support. It would also need to have a different look. And if you pursue the international style, that's fine, but it needs to look smaller. It needs to look more in keeping with the neighborhood. And in keeping with the neighborhood, to be more precise about that, the Urban Design Guidelines talk about matching up plate heights, matching up cornices, looking at what's adjacent to it, what's across the street, and being compatible with that. So when you've got a wall that goes up flat two and a half stories, which is what the front of this building does, I don't see that as being compatible with one-story stucco buildings across the street. So that compatibility factor is very important to me, beyond the architectural style. So I hope that gives some additional guidance. It's not that I don't like the international style. I do like it. But it's in the context of this neighborhood and in the, more precisely, in the bulk and scale of the building.
Thank you, Ms. Lodge.
Thank you, Madam Chair. And once again, I agree with Ms. Jacobs. But I would like to add on the architectural style. I don't know if you're familiar with a newly finished house that is actually a preassembled house in sections on Pedragosa Street. Each Pedragosa, very international style. It's between Garden and Santa Barbara Streets, I believe. In any event, I really like that house, and I was trying to think why I do. Well, one reason is it's got all big trees in the back around it. It also has a big setback in the front and a very nice landscaping. And it even ties in with what must be at least an early 20th-century water tank tower in the back on the adjoining property. It may even be 19th century. And I think it's because of the materials that have been used, partly. It's actually galvanized metal going horizontally, but it has a wood tone on it. Take a look at it. I think there are ways you can soften this building in addition to reducing the bulk. I think there are ways that you can stick with the international style and come up with a project that is at least more compatible. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Justice, are you still strawing?
Madam Chair, I think the discussion's precluded the need for a straw vote at this point. I would like to call a question to keep us moving forward on this one.
All right. Thank you very much. So to clarify, we're asking, the motion is for a continuation.
That's correct.
Correct. And the applicant has agreed to a continuation. Heavy head nodding. Come on. Thank you. I want to make sure we're all on the same page. So with that...
With referral back to the ABR and in consideration of the comments made by the commissioners, to try to come back with a less bulky project that still may be compatible with the design, original design that's been proposed.
Thank you. So we have a motion, and the second is Mr. White, correct? Am I correct? Yes, okay. The second's Mr. White. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Madam Chair, before everybody leaves, the CEQA timeframe for adopting a negative declaration is within 188 days of the start, and we are right up against that deadline. So I would ask the commission if they are willing to adopt the final mitigated negative declaration today, just the environmental document.
Mr. Thompson?
I move that we adopt the draft final mitigated negative declaration per the findings in the staff report for the MND.
Mr. White, or Mr. Justice, is this under discussion?
I'm sorry. I'll second that.
All right. Thank you very much. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you very much. And the appeal of the MND is a 10-day appealable to the City Council. Thank you.
Do you like your plans?
So we're clearing the decks a little bit and preparing for our next applicant, which is the application of Jim LaCron, architect for Gary Caesar. I hope it's Caesar or Caesar. 2515 Medcliff Road.
Madam Chair, if you could give us 20 seconds, I think...
And we have, I'm sorry, for the staff report?
Kelly Broderson will be giving the staff report. We'll need a couple of seconds here.
Okay. A little recess for five minutes. What, you don't need it? Just a couple of seconds? All right. No recess. We're getting ready to roll.
Good afternoon, Chair Larson and Commissioners. This project is a request for a coastal development permit for a second-story addition to an existing one-story, single-family residence at 2515 Medcliff Road. The 15,469 square foot bluff top site is in the E3 zone and the applicable jurisdiction of the coastal zone. There is an existing 1,348 square foot, single-story residence. The site is accessed by an approximately 300-foot-long driveway off of Medcliff Road. The applicant is proposing a 1,647 square foot, second-story addition with a new 421 square foot, two-car garage. With the approval of this project, the new house will be 3,554 square feet, which is 81% of the maximum FAR guideline. The applicant is requesting a modification for an addition and alterations to the existing legally non-conforming building within the interior setback. The existing house was built approximately six inches within the interior yard setback along the east property line. Therefore, any alterations along this wall require a modification. To keep in line with the existing foundation, the applicant is proposing to construct 138 square feet of first-floor addition, which will encroach six inches into the interior yard setback on the east property line, shown here in the purple. Window alterations are also proposed along the existing legally non-conforming wall. The project was reviewed by the Single Family Design Board on December 8th and December 22nd. At the first meeting, the applicant proposed that both the first and second story encroach into the interior setback at the east property line. The board supported the first-floor encroachment, but stated that the second floor should not be encroaching into the setback. They had concerns and requested that the applicant study the second-level floor plan, push the second story back out of the setbacks, reduce deck sizes to aid in privacy, and increase the deck setback from the property lines, re-study the solarium on the south side of the structure to be more compatible with the architecture and neighborhood, and re-study window variety on the east elevation for more simplicity. When the project returned to the Single Family Design Board on December 22nd, 2008, the second story had been moved back from the setback line by two feet, 10 inches. The board stated their support for the encroachment of the first-floor addition. They requested that the applicant study some additional design elements, such as the master bedroom chimney, the front porch support posts, and the window treatment above the garage door, and consider adding a trellis over the garage door, and study the corner solarium window on the south elevation for alternative solutions. Subsequent to today's meeting, this project will return to the Single Family Design Board for preliminary and final approvals. Staff supports this modification because the existing structure is legally non-conforming to setbacks, and the addition will not block views nor encroach upon the adjacent neighbors' privacy. You can see in this slide, this is the area of the second-floor addition, I mean, I'm sorry, first-floor addition that will encroach about six inches right in this area. The addition and window alterations will be consistent with the placement of the existing structure on site. The project, subject to the conditions in Exhibit A of your staff report, is consistent with the Coastal Act and the city's local coastal program. And staff recommends that the planning commission approve the coastal development permit and the modification, and making the findings in the staff report, and subject to the conditions of approval in Exhibit A. At this time, I've only received one letter expressing concern on the project, and that would conclude my presentation for this project.
Thank you very much. And we're sort of fumbling around, looking to see if we have that letter.
Exactly right.
Yeah. Do we have that letter?
Yes.
Oh, okay. Thank you. All right. Well, I'll make note of that when we open the public hearing. So Jim LaCron, would you like to come forward and present your project?
Thank you, Madam Chair, Commissioners.
Please introduce yourself, even though I did.
Sure.
It's part of the...
Jim LaCron, project architect.
Thank you.
And is there a, where's that microphone, the large microphone, so I can operate the power plane? I'd like to give you guys a little bit more background on this project. This project has been in the pipeline for quite a while. It was actually reviewed by the ABR prior to the SFB being created, and went through a lot of design modifications at that time. And the ABR had positive comments, and then we were required to do some significant engineering studies for the site, hydrology to handle the drainage, geology to determine the bluff top setback, et cetera. And at that time, the SFB was created, and so we kind of started over with the design review. And so we went back to them and have really massaged the design quite a bit. What I'd like to do is point out a few things. Does this one work? Yeah. Okay. In a little bit more detail, this is the setback area that we're talking about, the minor encroachment here, it's next to a fence, and the SFB did request that we push the second floor back, so there's no modifications that are required here. Let's see, this one. This is the rear portion of the building, the bluff is out here, and we were requested to pull this deck back so that it doesn't, it complies with all the setback guidelines to the neighboring property there. This is a perspective view of the project from the rear of the property. I think most of you made a site visit, and because of the flaglot condition, you're well aware that the project really can't be seen from any place in the neighborhood. You have to go more than halfway down the driveway before you're even able to see it. Yeah, can you, one more. Yeah, this is, this is the driveway, the shared driveway. And at this point, when you can start to see the story poles, oh, that's better, you're more than halfway down the driveway. This house is a two-story house. The house is surrounded by large two-story houses, and this house effectively blocks any view of the house from the neighborhood. And that's the story pole setup that we did. And the only place that it really comes into view is when you get to the end of the driveway and make the turn into the property. The property, the design is less than the maximum height. There's a central cupola monitor window that brings light into the center of the house, it's a little tower. But the, here, but the perspective views show that you really can't even see this from anywhere. It's the highest portion of the building, and that's still under the building height. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I'll open the public hearing. We do have correspondence from Paula Westbury, who urges us to be well and to take care of the redwoods. Thank you. Any other, anyone else here? Seeing no one, we'll close the public hearing and go to questions by the commission. Mr. Thompson, followed by Mr. Justice.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I have some questions for staff to clarify the Page 3 zoning ordinance consistency square footages that are shown. I couldn't understand where the square footages came from, starting with the existing building, 2348. And the verbiage of the staff report, it indicates it's like 1348 square feet. And the proposed building at 2866, if I add the first-floor additions and the garage, I don't get anywhere close to 2866. So could, perhaps you go through that and tell me where the numbers come from?
Let's see. Mr. Thompson, I believe that the applicant provided those, and it's very possible that I could have transposed some numbers when I entered them into the staff report. Let's see. The building footprint is 1,348 as existing, and the building footprint now will be 2,089. So that will include the decks and the addition. And then the...
Okay, so that includes decks as well as the building?
Yes, the hard state, yeah. And then paving, the paved areas, the driveway and paved areas is 1,000 square feet, and the decks, I'm sorry, I guess the decks, no, the decks are included. The landscaping is 11,603 square feet, which is about 75% of the site. Did I get those wrong?
Well, it's not critical to the modification that's requested, but just for the interest of getting it accurate is the reason why I asked the question.
I apologize for that.
Perhaps you might want to look at that before we get to final minutes in resolution. The other thing I have a question on is the draft conditions of approval, Page 3, Number C3, Medcliff Public Improvements. It requires supply and install directional regulatory traffic control signs. Can you explain what regulatory traffic control signs would be appropriate to this project?
Madam Chair, we don't have an answer for that question. At most, it would be a stop sign, I imagine, at Medcliff, and, no, actually, I don't know. We'll try to find out for you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Justice?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Question to staff. All of the calculations as far as FAR and NPO findings are based on lot size, that's the entire lot size, which goes down to bluff face and onto the beach. Is that correct?
Yes.
Thank you.
Commissioner Justice, that's correct.
Thank you. Any other questions with the applicant? Comments by the commission, please? No comments? Mr. Justice?
I'll kick things off.
Thank you.
I appreciate the applicant's intent to improve this property. Looking at it from a size, scale, and bulk perspective, I looked at the, kind of the layout of this lot in comparison with the others, and this is one of, it appears to be one of these Mesa lots that has been divided over the years, and delightful little bungalows put on each of the resulting lots. And I believe that the NPO and the Single Family Design Board requirements take on a little different color when you're dealing with a lot that has a 39% slope and a third of the property in a steep bluff face, thereby reducing the usable area of the lot by about 30%. And looking at this site, I just, I can't see my way to approve the project because I think it's too large for the usable area of the site, given this site and the adjoining uses. I know it can't be seen. I know you can make a good argument that this is an appropriate development, but I can't get there from my seat.
Thank you very much. Mr. Thompson?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Well, I was going to say that the modification that's requested is understandable and appropriate. We're talking about allowing an update to something that's legal in the setback. The only issue that Commissioner Justice raises is with the CDP, I guess, for neighborhood compatibility. And I have to come down on the other side than my colleague and say that I would support the CDP.
Anyone else?
I want some lights on.
Oh, good. Oh, Mr. Justice's light just went out. All right. Ms. Jacobs?
Thank you, Chair Larson. In looking at the Single Family Design Review Board comments, there are several things on their to-do list regarding the solarium in particular, and even to the point where it says some board members would prefer reduction in the overall building size. That's from the December 2008 review, and I know they've seen it again since. But I do, I do look at it and feel, hmm, it's kind of big. But it's, it's not looking at the neighborhood study and the other houses in the area, it's not the biggest. It doesn't have the highest FAR. I mean, it's really not completely out of keeping with what's in the area. So for that reason, I can support it. But I do take very seriously the Single Family Design Review Board's recommendations and expect that their guidance will be strictly followed. And I'm sure you've heard it, and it's been said here, and it's been said, and I know Mr. Mahan would probably point it out to you regarding the windows. I see that in here. And really, in Santa Barbara residential architecture, we try for a kind of human scale. And a solarium that goes up over 20 feet as a wall of glass doesn't really invite human scale. It's not in keeping with the kind of other residences that we usually see. And yet, the overall design is lovely, the treatment of the windows and the different materials and so on. It has a nice kind of seaside architecture to it. So I appreciate the talent of the designer and just hope that you will continue to work with the Single Family Design Review Board to create something that really is very comfortable in the neighborhood.
Thank you, Ms. Lodge.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Well, here I go again, agreeing with Mrs. Jacobs. Go first next time, okay. I'm looking at, on the site visit, looking at the adjoining houses, it doesn't seem as if this would be out of scale with what's already there in the neighborhood. But I do have some of the same concerns about the two-story-high wall of glass, and I think actually, the residents might have an issue with that when they have to live with it and the sun coming in. So my suggestion would be that the architect look at that.
Thank you, Ms. Lodge. Mr. White?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I wanted to ask staff and also Ms. Jacobs was, who participated in the NPO activities, how does that unusable land enter into the, is that, we run into this as another example in a completely different zone, district, but that, how is the unusable land accounted for? Is it just, there's no, there's no accounting for it? If it's unusable, it's fine, it can be...
Madam Chair.
It goes into the square footage?
I'd be happy to answer that question. The, the NPO FAR is a gross lot area, actually, I'm sorry. It may be net lot area if you take out right-of-way or public easements. Beyond that, all the lot area of the lot is used for the calculation of the FAR. The FAR is a blunt instrument. It is not, it isn't, I would recommend, and for purposes of, and I think that Commissioner Jacobs could comment to this as well, that was one of the reasons, I believe, that the NPO committee chose not to apply an FAR on lots beyond 15,000 square feet. The FAR started losing its purpose as a tool for allowing for neighborhood compatibility... The FAR started losing its purpose as a tool for allowing for neighborhood compatibility on small lots once you got over 15,000 square feet. A 15,000-square-foot lot in general has less neighborhood compatibility issues than lots, the quintessential Mesa terrace 5,000, 6,000-square-foot lot, where a two-story home next to another two-story home would have real issues. So that, it is a blunt instrument. And in that sense, the, it does look at the whole lot and does not look at the, the other characteristics that are exhibited by particular lots.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I, in looking at this site and looking at this design, I feel like this is an awfully big building. And I appreciate Ms. Lodges and Ms. Jacobs' comments about, it happens to be right next to at least one other very big building. And so that, to your north, I believe, or northwest or whatever. So I will be able to support the project. I have a little hesitation that I think is what, or Mr. Justice is coming from, that we're making something that's compatible with something that's over scale next door. So I would be disappointed, I mean, what, the logical outcome of this is that then there will be a whole series of buildings. The next building that comes in here will be its cousin and will be fully two stories from one end to the other. And that hadn't been my vision of, of the development in general. But as they say, I'll be able to support this project. Thank you.
Any other comments?
My comment is, I do feel it, I too feel it is too big. The other concern I have is, is that the solarium window is a wrap, meaning it's on two elevations. And even though you may be the first one out there with that, it could create a privacy issue at some point, or be argued that way, or could be argued for more view blockage, all kinds of stuff, aside from the fact that it's a beacon at sea. So, so I would, I would, you know, I support a project there, but I can't support this as being, as large as it is and with the size of the solarium windows. Really terrific, terrific reflection, too. So reflective surface, tremendous. So I can't support this as it's presented today.
Mr. White?
Madam Chair, I want to make one further comment, and that is, I take to heart that the Single Family Design Review Board has reviewed this and has approved it, and that's-
Do you, I need a quick question. Do you have preliminary and final?
The comments that come to us, right?
Madam Chair, note, we, I'm not even sure if we have preliminary. We certainly don't have final.
Okay, all right. Yeah, I didn't-
I don't think so. It was just comments to you.
Okay, fine.
But while I'm here, just to address Ms. Jacobs' comments, yeah, the comments that she read from the December meeting, we did scale the building back, and that was when we stepped back the second floor. So we are working closely with the SFDB, and we fully intend to refine the details and the elements in the solarium window and all that, so.
I just have that feeling that you're premature here, that's all. That's how I feel about it. I feel like maybe, I'm not making the motion, but-
They couldn't give a preliminary until it came to PC, so.
Right. And Madam Chair, I would ask whoever makes the motion that, an expression of concern about the size of the building, something to that effect, and that they study that harder would be, I appreciate that. Thank you.
Madam Chair.
Mr. Vincent?
Just to clarify for yourself, as well as the commissioners and members of the public, projects do not and cannot get preliminary approval at a design review body before coming to the planning commission.
Before coming before us.
The point of that is because the preliminary approval is the appealable approval, and it would set the whole process out of whack to have design review appeals going to the city council prior to a decision before the planning commission regarding a land use decision.
No, I understand that. I just, I thought maybe I had heard, I had misheard someone, so I was just double-checking.
And regarding the, the Single Family Design Board, as well as all of the other design boards, I believe are much more clear that when they put a project on indefinite continuance to the planning commission, that they really are, that that's an important step. I mean, that was one of the things we stressed after, I guess it's now our summer meeting of 2007 with the design review bodies, and, and the, and now with the compatibility findings that they have to make for many decisions. We've really stressed the importance of these various steps within the process, and that for a design review body to send a project to the planning commission on an indefinite continuance is one of the significant steps within the process and should not happen if the design review body really needs to make significant changes to the project.
Thank you. So, with all of that and all of our comments, what is the feeling of the commission? Oh, lights, sorry. Mr. Thompson?
Well, I'm ready to make a motion. I don't know if Commissioner Jacobs has comments before I make a motion.
Ms. Jacobs?
I will probably be seconding that motion, but I wanted to add some conditions regarding reducing the overall height and reducing glazing in two areas, which I can specify if you like.
Mr. Thompson?
I wouldn't add that to the motion that I was going to make. I would leave that up to the design board to work the design issues, so. If-
Why don't you try a motion?
If I'm ready for my motion, I would move to approve the project with the findings in the staff report and the draft conditions of approval, less the condition about directional and regulatory signage.
Is there a second for this motion, please?
Madam Chair.
Mr. Caddo?
I could, I did get some information about those traffic, traffic control signals. Those are for, those are for construction only, so during the course of construction.
Thank you. So the motion fails for lack of a second? So may I have an alternate motion, please? Ms. Jacobs?
I will give it a try. I move that the commission make the findings and approve the modification for the interior setback and approve the coastal development permit with the following conditions, that the project, when it returns to the Single Family Design Review Board, concentrate on reducing the glazing of the window treatment over the garage door and the solarium, and re-study the possibility of reducing the overall height of the building. And then in relation to the traffic signs, I think we need to specify in the conditions that that is related to the construction, just for clarity on what those signs are. So that's, that is my motion.
Do we have a second?
I'll second the motion, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Ms. Lodge. Then we'll call the question. All of those in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed?
No.
No. Ms. Jacobs, your light is on.
Is there a topic for a straw vote or under discussion, something that could move towards another motion?
Point of information, I heard three noes and four ayes, so-
Oh, we didn't? I heard three, I heard three and three.
Excuse me.
All right.
Justice Larson White.
Well, so, so we're at a tie, so the motion-
So the motion fails, which means the project is denied unless we have another-
Mr. White? I'm looking for some way to drag Mr. Thompson back to yes here, if the wording were something to the effect of asking the single, the design review board to study the bulk of the building and just leave it at that. Would that, could you tolerate having that as a supportable motion?
Madam Chair, and Mr. White, yeah, the Single Family Design Board has in their own minutes what issues that they want addressed when it comes back. And I, as you know, like to leave the architectural issues to the architectural boards. So that was my reason for voting against the motion, which had a lot of specific detail as to what the architectural board had to do. So if we were simplifying what we were sending it back to the design board to do, that would be appropriate, I think.
Mr. White?
Then I, I might try a motion, Madam Chair, then, to, that the planning commission approve the modification and the coastal development permit with a comment to the Single Family Design Review Board that it, the commission has concern about the bulk of the, of the building and that the board study that.
Ms. Jacobs?
We haven't gotten a second, and I'm not going to make a second, I was going to.
Okay, I saw your light, I thought perhaps that was a second. Okay. Do we have a second? Once again, the motion fails for lack of a second. So we have to get there from here somehow, folks.
I'll second the motion.
Oh, good. All right. All right, so-
With the understanding that when it goes back to the design board, they are going to review their own minutes and follow through on their own items regarding the window treatments and the solarium window, et cetera, which they have already said they're going to review.
I see Mr. La-
Madam Chair, I would-
Yes, Mr. White?
I would hope that, that the planning commission minutes would go back to the board as well, so they'd have our comments to, to review as well.
And I don't want to confuse the mix here, but I saw Mr. LaCronn approaching the microphone. Are you inclined, just for a moment?
Well, Madam Chair, Commissioners, I was just speaking with Mr. Caddo, and we're perfectly willing to work with the SFDB and, you know, massage the solarium and do all of that. So it's, we're hoping that you can craft a motion amongst yourselves to allow us to do that.
I'm hoping we can, too. That's a good squabble. We got to do it every once in a while, you know? All right, so back to, back to the squabble. We do have a motion on the floor and a comment. Wait a minute. Check my light, Mr. Thompson?
Ms. Jacobs?
Ms. Jacobs? Thank God, Mr., what's your name? No. Just kidding.
Under discussion, Madam Chair. I'm not going to be able to support the motion because I do feel strongly about the solarium as, you described it as a beacon, but we do, on the bluff tops occasionally consider when there is a very unusual situation of light or glare or glazing, and I think this qualifies as one of them. And I would like, as policy matter and as a land use matter and a consistency matter, to send the message from the planning commission back to the Single Family Design Review Board to say, we, we are serious about the solarium. And, you know, normally, I like to say, well, you know, just let the, let the design board do it. But this started off at ABR in 2006, and it had more comments about the solarium last year, and the solarium is still there and it hasn't changed. And when I, when I see kind of a repeat occurrence of something that the ABR and the Single Family Design Review Board have both said, let's not do this, and it keeps showing up, I think that is an option, an opportunity for us to say, not just about design, but it's about land use and policy and consistency, and we really can say that a two-story, double-sided wall of glass is not consistent with the kind of houses that we see in our coastal zone. And so I do feel strongly about it. It's not a design issue only for me, so I'm not going to be able to support the motion as it has been expressed.
I appreciate that. I also won't be supporting the motion because I feel the same way. Mr. White?
Well, Madam Chair, I mean, my colleagues to my left need to, I mean, either we just leave this be and it goes, gets appealed to the, is this something we want to get appealed to the council, or is there a way to, are there any, is there any wording in there that would find, find the middle ground? I, I'd hope that we'd find a way to do that.
Well, I couldn't agree more. Ms. Lodge?
The maker, the motion perhaps, is willing to put something into it referring to the solarium, the glazing, because that seems to be a major issue.
And I'm, maybe if we go back to, is there something in the, okay, there is a comment five of the SFDB, study the corner of the solarium, is one comment there. I'm looking, I'm looking for-
Perhaps if you just said, change the solarium rather than just study it, indicate that this, this is what we want.
That work for Mr. Thompson? And we have the architect, Mr. LaCronn?
Madam Chair, Commissioners, if you want to, I don't mean to presume to draft a motion for you, but if, we would be happy to reduce it if you want to say reduce, that would be fine.
All right. Thank you. Will that work for Mr. Thompson?
Yeah, to get this thing off the dime, I will agree to that.
Okay, thank you.
I just want to make the point, though, that the, the design board has already said that they want the applicant to change the window treatment over the garage and the solarium window. So when it goes back to the design board for preliminary and then final approval, they've already told them to change it, so, you know.
I agree with you.
Okay.
But I'm looking for, I'm looking for more people that will, will find they have something to talk about that they agree on, so.
Ms. Lodge?
So that's my motion, then, Madam Chair, as Mr. LaCronn is-
And I will second the amended motion.
Thank you.
Can we restate the motions, just for clarity? We've been around the block so many times now. What is the motion?
I'll do it.
Read us the motion.
Madam Chair, the motion was to approve the mod, the coastal development permit, with a comment to the SFDB that it reduce the solarium.
All right. And the second is by Mr. Thompson. All right. We'll call the question. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed?
None.
All right, motion carries. You have a project that's appealable within 10 days to the city council.
Because I gave all of my plans to Pete Aylin.
Madam Chair, we will need a couple of minutes to load the next PowerPoint.
All right, we'll, we'll take a 10-minute recess. Thank you.
Okay, we're calling our meeting back to order. And we are having our final, second, clumsy a little bit today. The application of Tom Meany, architect for Mojave Bay Incorporated, 1109 Luneta Plaza, residential, five units per acre. Please come forward, Mr. Meany, or wait a minute, staff report, sorry. Have a seat, Mr. Meany, let's go, Kelly. Kelly Brodessen, staff report.
Chair Larson and commissioners.
Thank you.
This project is a request for a coastal development permit for a second-story addition to an existing two-story, single-family residence at 1109 Luneta Plaza. The 14,000-square-foot project site overlooks Shoreline Drive and Leadbetter Beach and is in the E3 zone in the appealable jurisdiction of the coastal zone. There is an existing 3,378-square-foot, two-story residence with an attached 384-square-foot garage. The site is accessed by a 120-foot-long driveway off of Luneta Plaza. There is a 160-square-foot, second-story balcony that was enclosed here, and a 160-square-foot room which was constructed. Both of these things were done without permits. These violations will be abated with the approval of this proposal today. There are minor additions proposed to the north side of the residence consisting of approximately 172 square feet here in the entryway and the storage area which is over to the right-hand side of the front of the house. And there's also a 337-square-foot, second-story addition with a 274-square-foot covered deck, or 274 square feet of covered deck. And you can see that addition on the second-floor plan right here. With the approval of this proposal, the new house will be 3,616 square feet, which is 84 percent of the maximum FAR. Approximately 163 square feet of the second floor is being demolished to create a two-story entry element, so therefore there's a net decrease in the overall size of the house. The applicant is requesting a modification for alterations to the existing legally non-conforming building within the interior setback. The existing house was built approximately three inches within the interior yard setback along the southwest property line. Therefore, any alterations along this wall require a mod. There are currently four windows on this side of the house, two on the first floor and two on the second, and I've tried to show you pictures of that. It's hard to get back there, so you can look in this area, and this is the other side of the house. The proposed alterations consist of one small window on the first floor with an iron grill and three windows on the second floor. Also, an architectural buttress is proposed on the southwest corner of the building. Staff supports this modification because the amount of window openings will not be increasing from what is currently permitted, and no new floor area will be added within the setback. And again, the encroachment is legally non-conforming, it's three inches. The project was reviewed by the Single Family Design Board on November 10, 2008. The board expressed appreciation for the architecture and stated that the size, bulk, and scale would be appropriate for the neighborhood. They did also review the landscape plan on March 9, 2009. The preliminary landscape plan was found to be appropriate for a bluff-top property. When the project returns to design review, the applicant was requested to provide a pedestrian path from the pedestrian gate, study a biofilter in the driveway, and show elevations of the entry gate and the walls. So subsequent to today's meeting, the project will return to Single Family Design Board for preliminary and final approvals again. This project, subject to conditions in Exhibit A, is consistent with the Coastal Act and the city's local coastal program as discussed in the staff report. And therefore, staff recommends that the planning commission approve the coastal development permit and the modification, making the findings in the staff report and subject to the conditions of approval contained in Exhibit A. We did receive one letter expressing concern regarding this project from Ms. Paula Westbury, and that concludes my presentation for today. And Tom Meany, the architect, is available.
Thank you very much, Mr. Meany.
Thank you. Could you go to, how about, how about the elevation? That's good. So as you recognize, my name's Tom Meany, architect for the owners. As you recognize from your site visit, it's a very sad building on a very happy location. So I was assigned the task of trying to bring up the quality of the architecture to the same level as the quality of the site, which was a fun challenge to have. So primarily, what we're doing is we're adding, in terms of additional square footage, we're adding a little bit of second-floor space here. We're adding some first-floor space here, and actually, we're taking out second-floor space as we create this volume entry from the second floor. We need our solar access requirements, and actually, this is what you see as you come down the driveway. So you do still see the profile of the sky above the drive as you approach the house. And primarily, what we're doing here is cosmetic change. We're keeping the original form of the building, but upgrading it in terms of finishes, details, things of that nature. So the front of the house, primarily what we're doing besides the bedroom addition, is creating something that feels like it's an appropriate entry for the house. So that's what this element represents. And then we had a little storage piece out here, primarily just to break up the flatness of this two-story section in this location. So the scale of the house is small and intimate in nature as you approach it from the guest parking area. And additionally, what we did here is on the second-floor addition, we brought this element proud of what's below it by about 14 inches, just to get a shadow line and some detail across here, once again, to break up the flatness of this plane. Then on the backside, as you recall from your site visit, there's that pretty nasty enclosed porch that runs the full length of the house, and so we're taking that out. That was one of the violations that we're rectifying. But I felt it was important to have some sort of element to break up the flatness of this mass and to give some nice, deep shadow line, especially as perceived from, you know, down below on Cliff Drive and other places along the beach. So primarily, this little step-out deck off of the master up above just gives us a nice, deep relief and a nice, deep shadow line on the second floor. And Kelly also mentioned the little buttress we're adding here, and primarily, it's just to break up the boxiness of this corner of the building, and then to tie the gate passage into that element in that location. And here's where we're demolishing the illegal first-floor square footage, and we're replacing it with a covered outdoor living space with a matching covered deck on the second floor, once again, to give a nice, deep profile and shadow line on this side of the building. And this element down here is existing that we're, it's a funny, cheap siding that we're just reskinning and adding thickened walls throughout, basically, to enhance the character of the building. And we're looking at, you know, hand-forged ironwork, some stone in some places, hand-forged light fixtures, you know, redoing the garage doors and thickening the garage door wall to add some detail. So most of it's just cosmetic, but it's been a fun exercise to take a house that doesn't have much grace and style and try to make it something special.
Thank you. I'll open the public hearing. We have public comment from Paula Westbury, who is not in favor of the project. Not seeing anybody else here, I will close the public hearing. And any questions from the commission, please? Mr. Thompson?
It isn't a question now, but the same, it would have been a question regarding the requirement for signs. I think we need to clarify that that's during construction only.
Madam Chair, Commissioner Thompson, that's a standard condition, that's standard language, and we will change that standard language so it's clear for all time.
Thank you. Any other questions for any, for Mr. Meany? No? Comments by the board? Mr. White?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I can support the project. I think it's a, obviously, as Mr. Meany said, it's a magnificent site, and it's getting the attention it deserves. Thank you.
Mr. Thompson?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Well, I think that the modification that's requested is certainly appropriate and supportable, and the coastal development permit that, for the remodel of the house, is certainly appropriate. And we're not talking about increasing the footprint, the square footage and so forth. It will be an improvement to the neighborhood, so I definitely support this project.
Ms. Lodge?
I also support the project, and it's just a three-inch intrusion into the setback. So it certainly, and it certainly is a great improvement over what is there. I'm ready to make a motion to approve.
Thank you. One moment, Mr. Justice?
I concur with the comments of my fellow commissioners.
Thank you. Ms. Lodge?
I move that we approve the modification and the coastal development permit and conditions as in the staff report.
Thank you. A second?
Second.
Okay, Ms. Lodge has made the motion, Mr. Thompson has seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you very much. This is appealable within 10 days to the city council. With that, we'll move on to our administrative agenda. Beginning with approval of minutes. There we go. Any corrections?
Let's start with.
From February 12, I believe, correct? And that would be Mr. Thompson?
On page seven, under modifications number 11, it says the utility distribution plant, because the commission did not feel, I think it was that commissioner did not feel the modifications were appropriate, the meaning that the whole commission didn't agree with that is not correct.
And?
Is that under item number 11?
Item number 11. Let's get that. Anything else for that page?
I have one on item number, I mean, on page number nine, top of the page, number 31, says the EIR process. I'm not sure about the wording there, because we do not have an EIR on this project. It's a mitigated negative deck only. So are we talking about the environmental review process as opposed to an EIR process?
Yeah, that's good.
Madam Chair, I don't, I don't think so, exactly. As I recall, at that meeting, the planning commission was not looking favorably upon the negative declaration, whereas looking more towards the EIR. And then, then, then this comment came up that if they redesign, maybe the commission will be okay with the negative declaration. And I think that's, that's where this comes from. So I think, I think the comment, I think the comment is correct.
I guess the meaning, that meaning doesn't come through there, so I'm not sure how we would change the wording to make that obvious, but...
I think we can work on something like, like, like what I just said, really.
The requirement for an EIR can be avoided if there were design recommendations, something to that.
Yeah, correct.
Any other corrections for those minutes? 12, and the resolution, number 004-09. There's another one there, too, I think. That would be 1900 Lawson Road, and draft minutes on March 12.
Can we have a motion on the February 12? That was a reconsideration.
Oh, thanks. Can we have a motion, please, in a second? Okay, a second? Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Okay, you've got the resolution, 004-09? Okay. All in favor?
Madam Chair, I think we can do, can't we just do the cluster of stuff at the end?
Yes, we, okay.
Okay.
Cluster's fine. Okay, draft minutes on March 12, the joint meeting of the Planning Commission and the Transportation and Circulation Committee. Mr. Thompson? Oh, Ms. Lodge, sorry.
Thanks, Madam Chair. On page three, on the second item two, a fifth trip type for golf was separated out due to different characteristics. I remember asking what that meant at the meeting, and I've forgotten, and maybe it would be a good idea to have it in the minutes.
Okay.
Madam Chair, I wasn't there either, but I will get clarification on that one.
Okay, thank you.
All right. Anything else for those minutes? Anyone? All right. Could I please have a motion then for the?
Let's just move on.
Oh, okay. Moving on. March, oh, I'm sorry, I missed that. March 19. Moving on to March 19, please.
H4?
H4.
My, my comments under number two. Would like to see environmental document cover options for trying to keep the ordinance nimble, period. This is what I'd like added. Fees could be reduced or eliminated during recessions, comma, for very small units that are affordable by design, comma, or units in economically distressed areas, comma, no, period. And then inclusionary fees should be applied or should be considered for commercial development as well.
Madam Chair, Commissioner White, do you have that written down?
I do, in my own inimitable...
Will you give us a copy of that?
I shall.
Great, thank you.
Anything else for March 19?
Move to approve the draft minutes from March 12 to March 19.
Thank you, thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Liaison reports? Mr. Justice?
Madam Chair, the, I don't know whether Mr. Thompson or Ms. Lodge reported this, but the general plan subcommittee met last week with staff to go over some matters and talk about preparation for the May 8 workshop that staff is planning for the commission. At that meeting, we learned that the EIR release for the draft EIR is going to be delayed from sometime in September to December at the earliest. I know, I was quite distressed by this delay, but I'm sure that will come up when we meet as a body and take up the issue at the workshop.
Thank you very much. Mr. White?
Ms. Lodge.
Oh, okay. Ms. Lodge?
Oh, well, I was going to report on the downtown parking committee, so if you have something else on the... Okay. They had their quarterly report on the Granada Garage performance and decided they didn't need to have a quarterly report anymore. There was, had been concern about lack of use, and it has been building over time, and it's, and they have a special charge where, when you come in, if you're there for performance at the Granada or something like that, it's a flat fee and that. But if you're there for something else, you get the regular ticket, but there's somebody standing by the ticket splitter to help you with that. And that seems to be working well, so they seem to be, be pleased with the way that was going.
Great. I will say that the Granada Garage has one of the best views in town on the, from the top floor. Mr. White?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Ms. Lodge and I attended last night a, a meeting of the waterfront department, and it's concerning the future of West Beach, a workshop being led by Ms. Salee, and sort of opening the, the conversation about the, about West Beach and what improvements might or might not be made. There were a couple of ideas that have been proverbially floated about a, upgrading the outrigger and seashell facilities, and one of our prominent planners suggested that perhaps an inexpensive eatery might be a good idea there, and, and the conversation went back to the harbor master plan, which does contemplate an eatery in that area. So anyway, the, the discussion is opened, and there will be interviews with stakeholders as one of the next steps. And of course, the planning commission, quite a long time from now, will be hearing more about it, and hopefully, I'll get more as the, as the waterfront liaison and bring it back to you. But anyway...
Thank you very much.
Further focus on that. And, and the other thing was that there are, which was not on the agenda last night, is that the pedestrian improvements are, are scheduled for construction later this year in that area. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I also went, attended the HLC meeting and saw the pedestrian improvements, and they're fabulous, very interesting. I think we'll all be very happy with it. I'll make a brief show. Staff hearing officer report. 1600 West Mountain Drive is a T-Fire rebuild. They asked for two mods, and they received them. No, no one came to speak at the hearing, no letters were received, so they, it wasn't considered controversial. And it was on an 18-acre property, so it was completely a non-issue practically. On Cunego Road, also a T-Fire rebuild, the second story observes the required interior setbacks, but 125 square feet of the second story is proposed within the required 35-foot front setback. And so the, the requested mod was approved, finding that the lot is significantly constrained, and it's significantly below the required minimum lot size, and it's bounded on two sides by a public street. Then, 1041 Mission Ridge Road, also no one came to speak, no letters were received. And that modification, which was proposed, was, was granted, location of the fence and gate, because it does not create a safety, visibility, or aesthetic issue, and allows the continued use without impacts to the neighborhood. So that's, that was the show. I was very fortunate to be able to attend part of the meeting and then review the rest, so it really is an interesting process, and it was very well, very, I would say, heavily attended for, for what it is. So it's very worthwhile to keep your eye on that. Thank you very much. And any other business for us? Well, then with that, we stand adjourned. Thank you very much.